For those of you who have heard earlier, they're interesting enough. There are elements in what we discussed that can lead to a strategic plan. A plan that can be adhered to a budget and maybe make things a lot easier for all of us in getting things accomplished within a long-term span, maybe three to five years. It says a plan like that is actually beneficial because it's bringing participation to the community and the people in the community feel like they are a, they have a part of a process which is theirs, they're paying for it. And overall, I feel the conference was a success. I learned a lot, also what I had more to learn.
Good. Well, thanks. Questions? Okay. Moving on to the next area, we've got the discussion on the Alpine Register as a Texas music friendly.
Chris Ruggia to join us today. He is the expert on the steps that we need to go through to become a music-friendly status.
And a musician.
Well, as it turns out, the Texas Music Friendly Community Program is under the governor's office. There's a music office within the governor's office. And the last few years, they started this certification process as part of their mission to encourage the music industry as an economic engine in the state of Texas. And so I spoke with their director and went over the requirements, and then I attended a workshop in El Paso. This was, I think it was in the spring, it was a while back. But the basic requirements are that the governor's office is looking for municipalities to assist them in maintaining their database of music industry participants as musicians, as venues, people who provide services to the music industry. And so one of the requirements is a memorandum of understanding where the city agrees to help the state update that database with local information. Since we're on the ground here, we know more than they do what's going on in Alpine. They also require a liaison to the music industry, between the city and the music industry if you identify. It makes sense that that would be me. They also require a music advisory board, which they don't, that can be coordinating with a pre-existing nonprofit, or it can be something formed by the council. There's no restriction as to the specific form that that board takes. And so I actually spoke with the CDB in Stephenville, who had just gone through this process. So the resolution in your packets is derived from the successful resolution that Stephenville used to become a music-friendly community. And that, oh, is that in your packets? Well, Eric should have it, and we can distribute it. But in short, it identifies the tourism director as the liaison to the music industry, and then identifies a group of stakeholders to serve as representatives of the music industry. And we would look at musicians, at venues, at event organizers, identify the kinds of stakeholders we'd be identifying, and then also suggest people to fill that. So when you, when that resolution becomes for the council, in one fell swoop, we identify, structure the board, and we also fill the board, and we can move forward. Stuart Ramsor, who was a tourism director before myself, has offered his assistance in serving on that board and recruiting for it as well. And let's see, the last requirement after that happens is we have a workshop in Alpine where the director of the music office comes and presents to our music industry, to our musicians and our venues, and tells them about the program. Their idea beyond just getting information is they want to have mechanisms in place where the people making music and making money from the making of music have an interface with their governments. And so the idea is that this board would meet regularly, that that board would canvas the people making the music or holding the events, and see are there any pain points going on with any city policies that they need to communicate? And that would be a forum where that board would collect that information, they'd communicate any feedback to me, and I would then bring it to you for consideration. It would be a way where we could facilitate communication between an important economic industry and yourselves. So that's the mission, and the basic requirements would be assigning a memorandum of understanding, which is that twice a year, I would update a spreadsheet for their, our musicians' venues, music services, and send it to the state. And then the passing of that resolution, which would form the board and identify myself or the person in my position as the liaison to that board. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
What's the benefit of having Alpine registered as a Texas music-friendly city?
Well, I would say primarily promotional, promotional benefit. It's something that we can, Texas Music Magazine for one, does a feature on each new community that takes on the thing, takes on that status. We can use their mark in our promotions to elevate the visibility in some degree of the music that we have. I wish I could say there was, you know, a truckload of money right behind it, but at this time, I'm not aware of that. And beyond that, it's a, one benefit that I see would be to encourage our music industry, which it has its ups and downs. It's pretty, I think for a town our size, we have quite a vibrant music community. We have a solid community of people making music here, and people come through frequently. In fact, right now, with the opening of the Old Gringo, and so we have the Richie Wine Saloon, the Old Gringo, Railroad Blues, Crystal Bar doesn't actually give me any information about, so I don't, I don't know what, when they're having shows, but when I prepare the weekly events, we have a lot of live music happening each week. And so I think this process would help us to encourage that industry, and we also will learn more about what's happening, and maybe we'll find ways to enhance the infrastructure and the actual enjoyment of amazing art that's happening around us all the time. That's fuzzy benefit for you.
Other questions?
Well, then, I would suggest that Eric and I would work on formalizing a resolution that.
You envision this costing us any more money?
No.
Okay. That's easy.
Yeah.
Variety, and it's just, it's a work, but.
I mean, you'll need to double my pay, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at the budget.
Okay. Next, we have transition from our information discussion into action items, and we have four of them this evening. So Eric, we'll turn the first one over to you.
Counsel, first item is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to approve the letter of engagement with Gibson, Reddick, and Patterson LLC to perform a single audit for the city of Alpine for fiscal year 2019-19, and letter of engagement to perform audit for the city of Alpine landfill for fiscal year 2019-20. The engagement letters were provided in the packets, they're fairly standard, just what we've used in previous years. There is an estimation of costs associated, which are in line with what we spent a few years past with your proposal.
Is there a motion?
I presume that we approve the letter of engagement to, with Gibson, Reddick, and Patterson LLC to perform a single audit for the city of Alpine, and the letter of engagement to perform an audit for the city of Alpine landfill.
So we have a motion, we have a second, did I hear? Okay. Lucy made the second. Discussion. No discussion? Go ahead and call for the question. All in favor of the motion to approve the letter of engagement with Gibson, Reddick, and Patterson, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Hearing none, motion passes, four to zero. Thank you. Next, Mr. Zimmer.
City Council, item two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action according to section 4.02A of the city charter, requesting city council's consent for hiring for department head position building official. Mr. David Hale is being recommended as a building official and also to provide oversight. He is here this evening. He's been here through the budget workshop and all the way here, thinking, did I know this was going to be three hours before I had a chance to address counsel? But I appreciate his patience. I did ask him to stand up and introduce himself and share a little bit of his experience, but, you know, his perspective on Alpine, yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me here tonight, council members. My name is David Hale. I've been in the building industry for over 30 years, and was a small business owner previously, and was a building official in the city of Pudgeon's. And currently, I hope to be here as Alpine Texas. I work for the city of Breakline as a combination inspector. So my, it's been 30 years in this industry, and I've seen a lot of things, but I love it. I love what I do. I'm here to build a department, I'm here to direct a department, and I'm here to stay within budget.
Thank you.
And I'm also here to generate revenue for the general fund. Beyond that, though, my main concern and my main reason why I'm in Alpine is because of the people and the quality of life. I think it's a great city, and I think as a director of the building service department, I can engage within that city and help the residents build and help Alpine build within the future of their master plan. So that's why I'm here.
Before we dive into the questions to keep us legal, could I ask for a motion?
I move that we take, we take the action to, wait, I'm trying to find it. The city council can consent to the hiring of the department head of the building official, David Hale.
You gotta let that work. And we have a second to that motion. So now we can have the discussion, so ask for it. What questions do you have for David?
Thank you very much.
Ready? Any questions? Lucy? So I do have a couple of questions. As this tends to be my nature. So you're in Breakline now, and you said coming to Alpine, what brings you to Alpine?
Well, definitely quality of life. There's 7.2 million people living in the metroplex right now.
That's a little busy in the, yeah, I've been to Breakline a few times.
So I want to continue doing what I'm doing, but I want to downsize.
Okay. So why Alpine? You can downsize in about anywhere.
Sure, but this is remote.
Ah, okay.
This is a little bit more remote than someplace like Silicon Grove or San Antonio. San Antonio's a big city, but the Outlining cities of these other big cities just don't appeal to me.
Okay. And how much time have you spent in Alpine?
I spent a total of about one week.
Okay, but have you traveled through here before?
I have.
Okay. And you are going through here to where, or?
Well, I've been to Marfa a few times. I've been to Tillingwood, and then Big Bend. So I've been, I've been back and forth quite a lot.
Okay. You may race along Highway 20, getting down to 10, and so I'm down here. One of the things I've noticed, and I grew up as a contractor or something, so I've been a building contractor myself for a long time, is it's a unique culture here in Alpine for a number of reasons. One, it's a small community, everyone tends to know everyone, and when we think about the challenges that we face here, first there's the IBC, but that's tends to be oriented towards large metropolitan areas. And when you come to Alpine, you know, put sprinklers and houses is probably a little bit overkill, given where things are going. Could you be comment about your perspective on international building codes and kind of what you observe here and what your thoughts are?
Well, Alpine's developing, and Alpine is a little different from the other major cities that you described. It's, it's a city that can take on more than it actually thinks it can take on as far as the building codes. It's just that having the right person in the department to be able to engage and direct the citizens and to show them how this code works for them. So the IBC code, I believe the city's adopted the IBC code, the most current code there is. So we want to stay within those parameters, but we also want to make sure that what we're doing is having the citizens of Alpine understand what we're doing as far as the master plan, the building master plan as far as the future. And we want them to do it. We definitely do. So those codes and those code enforcement codes are like the Vernon's Law, the VAT, the Texas State Administrative Codes. We all have to follow them, we just want to know how to follow them, and the best policy and the best way to follow them.
The reason I raise it, there are, I've received a number of comments from people about our compliance is certainly costing people a lot from a construction standpoint. We live in a community where the average household income, the average household income is less than $40,000 a year. And so while there are certainly safety standards and requirements we're trying to do with IBC in terms of smoke detectors and things like that that are critically important to safety, some might say some of the requirements might be over the top for a community like Alpine.
Some are. Some are. There is a little bit of a gray area in the code, but we're, it's my job to discern and to also explain that gray area, and where we're going to enforce the white and the black areas. So life safety 101 is the most important issue for everyone. So that's where we, as a department, stay, sustain, is life safety 101.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up, I think one of the things the council will look for is discussion on that subject going forward, because I think it's going to be important to us about how we go off and work that.
Sure. 6,000 square feet mandates a fire suppression system. I don't know how many 6,000 square feet homes are built in Alpine.
Not a lot.
Yeah. So there's, when we come up on those things and we have residents who are ready to build, that's part of the open door policy for my department, so.
One is, are you married? And what does your family think of you moving way out here?
Well, it is a little bit of a transition. It's something that, it'll take a little bit to get used to, I think, from being a good city. I am married, and I have two children, a 14-year-old daughter and a 16-year-old son. But they're happy.
Usually, it's hard for.
I understand.
You know, for a family to move.
Well, they like them all. They like them all.
Six flags.
Thank you.
One of the things I just kind of like to add in is David and I talked, and early on David's book sent me as well, and she was drawn to his ability to connect with others. And I think the feedback I received was that there had been a level of strong-arm approach in the community, and I've been approached by several contractors and others in town that just didn't, they didn't feel comfortable with the previous building official. And, you know, I think from an Alpine perspective, and as David demonstrated in his comments, it's really about having that open door and having that discussion with people, because 99% of people want to do the right thing. They just need help understanding what is that right thing. The 1%, we'll deal with them. That's why we're going to.
Think about city government, how familiar are you municipal government versus home role government?
Well, municipal government and home role, I mean, you have general law A, B, and home role. I've been in this, I've been doing this for about 15 years. So we were a general law A in Pudgeon's, we're a home role in Breakline.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did notice, right, that he is a father inspector as well?
Oh, no, I saw that, yeah, yeah.
Plan review as well.
Yep. Any other questions? I'll go ahead and call for the question then. All in favor of the motion to provide consent to the city manager relative to hiring of our building official David Hale, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Or is our motion passes? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the third item on our agenda. Turn it back to you, Eric, with regard to the property. And it's important, so I presume this will be the first reading of this ordinance.
Yes, sir. City Council, this is my discretion, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to adopt ordinance 2019-11-01, sale of property of .90 acres of property of the 1,000 block west Lockhart Avenue, west of 14th Street to the south-oriented, to the south-oriented road, and the unimproved portion of West Lockhart Avenue, north of Block 5, Block 1, Walton's Second Edition, to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, to Ned Allen. Your documents are in your packet relative to this. We've looked at it, discussed it, had it in our planning and zoning commission.
Someone like to make a motion on this topic?
I have a comment.
Hit them all, please. Yes, make a motion first.
I'd like to move that we discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to adopt ordinance 2019-11-01, sale of property of .90 acres above property of 1,000 block west Lockhart Avenue, and the unimproved portion of West Lockhart Avenue, north of Block 5, Block 1, Walton's Second Edition, to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, to Ned Allen.
Okay, so we have a motion, I presume, is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, is that correct?
To adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second to this?
One second.
We have a second now, opportunity for discussion. So if you'd please approach the opponent, give us your name, your ward, and your comments, please.
Catherine Crumpton, Ward 2, I live across from this property. I just really have a question. We got a certified letter saying we have until the 17th to object to the sale or to, I guess, make an offer. And then I saw this on the agenda tonight, so I wondered, do I have till the 17th or not? My neighbors and I were discussing it.
So I'll make comment, even though we're not obligated to in terms of the comment on this, but the way in which an ordinance works is we have the first reading of the ordinance. It then goes out for a formal public, it has to be publicized. You receive as a resident notice of this, that that would come up. City council cannot approve it until the second reading, and the second reading would in fact occur on the November 19th meeting, assuming we adopt it tonight. So that's the long answer to what should have been a short answer is, yes, you have until the 17th.
Well, I waited two hours to find out, so thank you.
Are there any other comments by council or discussion items or from the public? Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in favor of the first reading of the ordinance 2019-11-01, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ready opposed? Hearing none, the first reading of the ordinance passes four zero, and as I said, this will get published in its final form, and then it'll come back up on the night. Thanks for being patient, and we're glad you're here. The next is we have the approval of the Skyway Gardens Development Agreement. Mr. Zimmer, again.
Yes, counsel, fourth item is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to approve Skyway Gardens Development Agreement flat. Yeah, Rod as well, and there was a question that came up relative to the access road earlier today, so I'll let Rod address that question.
Two items for you all, so you know the facts. The issue was raised previously by the council regarding the percolation rate, or basically how fast will the pond drain the water when there's a big flood? And we got back an answer from the engineer that it would drain in about three days with a hundred-year flood, so that I think is satisfactory, certainly satisfactory from the perspective of the city of Alpine. The second issue was access to the property. The property has a 60-foot wide right-of-way going from Highway 118 to the east called Let You Get a Road. But 60-foot wide is often a wide road. The reason it's so wide is that initially, it was a 30-foot wide road that was partially owned by, now owned by the guy who's doing the development. And so they have agreed to convey to the city a 30-foot wide easement. That easement's going to go from the center of the road to the south. And previously had been purchased another 30-foot wide easement from the center of the road to the north by the Schwarzweger family. And the reason they bought that is because they had, they wanted to bring sewer servants to a couple of houses they were building over there that are on the north side of the road across the fence. So they bought this 30-foot strip so they could build the sewer easement, which they conveyed to the city. Anyway, the developer is going to build a 24-foot wide paved road along the south half of that road. The city will also talk to the Schwarzweggers to see if they would donate their right-of-way on their road to the city. But the Schwarzweger north half of the road is not needed for the development. And the development will have legal access based on the 30-foot strip, typical wide strip of land that is on the south half of that road going from west to east. So anyway, we're going to try to work things out with the Schwarzweggers, but the thing is that their, their deed or their right-of-way isn't necessary, wasn't necessarily part of what needed to be done by the developer to make this development legal. So from the city perspective, we're satisfied that the drainage issue's fixed, or will be fixed when it's developed, and that there will be legal access, and that when they're finished building, subdivision, they're going to pay the road according to city statutes. But it'll be a road that is conveyed, the right-of-way to other roads will be conveyed, certainly be a public road.
So is there a motion on this action item?
I don't have this, I don't have that in my packet. I don't have it on my agenda to read it from.
Well, you guys sent an amendment to this.
G O should send a, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I got the amendment.
I'll read it if you.
What is the motion? To take appropriate action to approve Skyway Gardens Development Agreement flat.
Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Discussion or questions? So I do, because I ran into John in the lane last night at New Water, and I said, hey, I said, have you been involved in any discussions? And their comment is, no one has ever contacted us. So I struggled with how we move forward with this since, because quite frankly, some of their comments was, hey, we feel we've been left out of that dialogue and discussion, and my sense is there's some pretty raw feelings there. Were they contacted?
I have not contacted them.
And who had the responsibility to contact them?
The. The, our discussions with the developer were to require the developer to come back to the city with consent from landlords, so that the city would know that the city had a legal right-of-way to get to the development. And they did that by coming back to us with some discussions they'd had with landlord.
Did Van get any compensation from the developer relative to their own?
Not that I know of.
So they are deeding it as a quit claim, or you don't know?
I don't know yet. The requirement of the developer plan is that we receive a deed to that property.
No, I understand that. I just, I struggle when that was, that road had been used a lot as a sixty-foot wide road. I, I don't want to find us in the, in the city in a situation where there's been some dealing that may not have been a love war, and we can't get a different.
Mr. Zimmer and I discussed it earlier, we're going to reach out to the Schwarzweggers to say that they want to also do the same thing as Van or Van and I, which is lay their easement on the property. Once again, we didn't, we haven't reached out to them because the, the issue of access was, property had been dealt with by thirty-foot wide.
Yeah, I understand. I, well, I, I'm not going to, I can't go tonight, so I can't make a position one way or the other, I'll just make an observation that we have a couple who has owned half the road that's been used by the trailer park that was back there. They had originally reached out to say, hey, we're paying taxes on this, and yet every one of their brothers is using it, and now they're kind of getting cut out of this deal for whatever reason. I just think that's a poor way to run around with developers.
I think we're okay with pushing this to the nineteenth. Give us the opportunity to talk with John and Ellen. You know, to me, the, this is certainly something that the developer could have presented to Rod, who jumped in, myself more clearly on the back end, and, and have a discussion with John and Ellen. I mean, I think it benefits them to have it paved down the middle versus just one side or the other.
One caveat would be that the developer's eager to continue with building, and he previously given him permission to do lot clearing and clearing up the old RV part there, he wants to get started on actual construction.
Yeah, and I think long term, he's, it's in his best interest because until Van's right-of-way is conveyed to the city, they don't fully have access to their development. And that still has to occur. And I would have preferred them to have been a little bit more forthright with, with you and then back to the city on what that north half was. I don't think, I don't think it'll hurt us to wait and have that discussion with John and Ellen, but that's.
Eric. Can I say something about the, they're wanting to go ahead and pay Letuia already?
Not, no, they don't pay Letuia after they finish building the subdivision.
Because we, I don't know if the water has, but we as a gas department haven't even run the utilities over there to them yet.
Yeah, they're not planning to pavement until after all the construction vehicles are finished using the Kalachi Road, and then they'll go back in and re-surface it. Because they're fine, but they told me.
Here's a question in the back.
I was just going to add a comment. My name's Robert Torres, I'm with IBI, the builders.
Yeah.
Yes, the paving won't be done, that will be the last phase after all the infrastructure is done, into the job site.
So I'm going to offer a thought, would it make sense, consistent with what, Rod, your discussion is back in going with the builder to proceed and to approve the development agreement, less item four, that allows them to proceed and allows another week until the next meeting to sort out, since clearly we're not going to be paving it in the next two weeks. Think that would make sense?
A big plan.
Okay. So would someone like to make that amendment? The motion that's put on the table?
I will, if you tell Tim again.
So the amendment would be to approve the plat for Skyway Gardens as written with the exception of item four, do you think of Rose?
Okay, I move that we approve the plat for Skyway Gardens with the exception of, are you on number four?
Rose.
Rose.
Okay. And there's the second to that, so we have the primary motion, the second, so we don't need to go approve and then come back. So any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion approved four to zero. And thanks, Rod, thanks, Eric. Okay, the next we have is any, is item number ten, prior to going to executive session, and that's council member comments or answers. And Maria, we'll start with you.
It seems really late, I'm glad you all watched over here. Thank you for coming.
No comments. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you for coming. Just wanted to say thank you for coming.
Yeah, I would say another, another excellent meeting, so thanks very much for coming. With that, I would, does someone want to propose a motion that we go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session.
Okay. And we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you would take a five-minute break. Five-minute break, we'll reconvene at sort of ten minutes to eight. Okay? Does that make sense? Someone like to make a motion to go back into executive session?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Everybody have a second, let me beg. Okay? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four to zero, we're back in executive session. On behalf of all the council, would like to thank you three gentlemen for spending all the time to deal with this. You were very generous to your time, and we certainly weren't bashful about asking questions. So we have one action after executive session, and do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Eric's recommendation in support of Robert Martin for chief of police for the city of Alpine.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, and again, I'm not allowed to vote as the mayor pro tem. All in favor of the motion as presented in support of Eric Zimmer's recommendation for Robert Martin to be the Alpine chief of police, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have three ayes and one aye, the motion passes three to one. And is, next will be a motion for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there any debate? Hearing none, the meeting is hereby adjourned. Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Maria and second was.